Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to actually take a moment of silence for the Simmons family in the loss of Edward Simmons III. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Racles.
Here.
Nine present and in quarters, and in chambers. Next up, the Mayor's address. Hey, Mayor.
Hello, thank you for the invite. Nice to talk to you all again. This is my address, excuse me, I just ran down the hallway to get my glasses. Uh, this is my report for August 26, 2024. Mayor's activity log, met with multiple department heads over the last two weeks about salary requests for the 2024 budget. I just want you all to know that Megan and I are doing lots of work getting the budget ready to turn into you. I'm gonna go into negotiations more in a couple of seconds here. Negotiating new four-year contract with Teamsters Local 142 rep and the Hammond Sanitary Sewer Department representatives. Meeting with Controller's Office regarding employee health insurance statistics. Meeting with Hammond Local 556 on-duty firefighters at Central Firehouse where we discussed upcoming negotiations as well as issues and problems facing Hammond firefighters on a daily basis. I met with representatives from Lake Shore Chamber Commerce over a letter I sent to them and the Economic Development Team in regards to an event Lake Shore Chamber was holding in at the Hard Rock Casino. Uh, negotiating a new four-year contract with Teamsters Local 142 rep and Hammond Public Works representatives. I met with Fourth District Councilman Bill Emerson regarding multiple issues across the Fourth District in Hammond and as well as our upcoming Mayor's Night Out set for Wednesday of this week. Met with City Planner Brian Poland about the new U-Haul facility, it's gonna be located off Camwood and Calumet Streets. As a delegate of Democratic, uh, as a Democrat, excuse me, as a delegate of nominee Kamala Harris, I attended the Democratic National Convention in Chicago last week. I was appointed to this role by the State Chairman Mike Schmull. Hammond was represented quite well at the DNC. Our State Representative Carolyn Jackson was there, Victor Lopez was there, Kevin Smith was there, and our Third District Councilman Barry Tyler was there. And that's what I know just off the top of my head. It's great to see Hammond so well represented. I appreciated everybody being out there. I got to appear on national TV this year, was recognized as a veteran supporter of Kamala Harris for US President. So it was a really cool week. I think Chicago did great. Hammond was well represented. I think it was widely successful. So, thank you to everybody that helped with that. And last but not least, appeared with Jed on WJLB Morning Show again, took phone calls from the audience on multiple issues. I wanted to let the council know that there's an opening currently in the Battalion Chief ranks of the Hammond Fire Department. Battalion Chief is the fourth highest rank in the Hammond Fire Department. Uh, we have two Battalion Chiefs on each day. Uh, these are filled by the Fire Chief and by the Mayor. Uh, this position was created when former Battalion Chief Danny Diambala was promoted to Assistant Chief Drillmaster. He vacated this Battalion Chief spot, which is in fire service. We posted this job internally, even though we did not have to do that. We've been doing that lately with the firemen. Posted this job internally, we got many qualified people applied for the position. We narrowed it down to three. The final interviews are taking place tomorrow. One of those three will be chosen as our next Battalion Chief in the Hammond Fire Department. The three finalists are Casey McCluskey, Matthew Matts, and Tommy Markovich. One of those three will be selected as the next Battalion Chief of the Hammond Fire Department. Uh, update on police and fire negotiations. Police negotiations, uh, I reported to this to you last meeting. We sent the FOP our final offer after prolonged periods of negotiation. It was apparent to us that any further, further progress couldn't happen financially for us with the significant raises we made in our offer. We were asking the FOP to vote on the offer we made. The FOP has in receipt of that offer. I believe a vote is being scheduled shortly. Goals of negotiation for us are recruitment and retention. Uh, four years ago, we did a good job of taking care of our pension problems. We're focused now on recruitment and retention, recruitment of new officers when we have openings, and retaining the officers we had. That's where we're suffering right now is for the retention and the recruitment, quite frankly, and we're trying to fix that with negotiations. Fire negotiations have sort of slowed down. My team is awaiting further information from the Firefighters Union before we could move forward. We have to get this information. We've been waiting for about a month now. I imagine we'll get it shortly, but fire negotiations aren't moving as fast, but we'll make it up with the rest of the year. Teamsters and the operating engineers are negotiating with us also. As I indicated in my monthly report, we've already started negotiation with the Hammond Public Works and the Hammond Sanitary District, excuse me, Sewer Department. Um, I want to remind the council that we gave him, uh, CD, all of our CDL drivers a $3 pay raise, and for the people that got $3 pay raise mid-year, we're gonna put them in for 0% pay raises in this year's budget cycle. We've already made the Teamsters aware of that. Uh, that should save us a couple bucks, uh, in next year's budget. Uh, wanted to update everybody on what's going on with the haunted house and the, uh, the old Reaper's Realm, uh, fireworks stand on 177th Street. We are working with the landowners on an agreement. The landowners, as a reminder, is the Meyer family. We're working with the Myers family on our agreement. Uh, working with this is complicated because there is numerous beneficiaries the Myers family has to deal with to talk about our offer. Tendatively, we do have a deal with them. We're just working out the logistics at this point. I anticipate we will have a finalized agreement probably by the time we all get together again next two weeks. Keep in mind that this all takes place between the city Hammond and the Meyer family, the owner of Myers Castle, the owner of the land and the Myers Castle. The lessy, the one we talk about a lot, is the Haluska family, who's been lesses of that property for decades, who runs a fireworks stand as well as a haunted house. I've recently spoke with John Haluska, representing the Haluska family, and informed John that the city Hammond would not object to one more year of the Reaper's Realm regardless of who owns the property at that time. Having Reaper's Realm takes some planning, takes a lot of hiring, takes a lot of thought put into it. They didn't want to go forward with all this without the assurance that they'd be able to do Reaper's Realm one more year. We agreed that regardless of who owns the property, by the time that rolls around, that Reaper's Realm will have one more go at that location. So, since this was announced, the Haluska family has given one more 4th of July and one more, uh, uh, haunted house. I know that doesn't make them feel great, but it's better than the alternative was, I guess, at the time. So, we're moving on that. Like I said, I should know more by the time we all get together again in a couple of weeks. And last but not least, I've been bouncing this item for the last couple of months, and I keep looking at Councilman Salinas, and I keep telling him, next meeting, we're gonna be ready to move on this resolution, and I'm gonna say it again today, Councilman Salinas. By the next meeting, I imagine we will be finally ready to move forward with the resolution regarding the demolition of the former hospital site, uh, the resolution between the city Hammond and the Franciscan, and the Franciscans. The status is as follows, and why this resolution is still on hold. Our city engineer Dean Button and Franciscan's construction manager have agreed on specification for the recycled concrete. This is a great breakthrough in allowing the city to be comfortable with knowing that the fill that's used on that site is gonna be good for redevelopment when that occurs. Another complicating factor there was Purdue Northwest and what they're gonna actually own and where their building's gonna be located, and the Chancellor and I meet, met recently, and there's an agreement as to what the Purdue parcel is gonna look like. This will allow the donation agreement between redevelopment and Franciscan to properly set forth the property to be donated, which includes the frontage along Holman Avenue. So basically, what I'm saying is those two items were holding us up, and they're clearing up right now. So, I'm gonna say it one more time. I think by the next council meeting, Councilman, uh, Salinas, we're gonna be ready to move forward with the Franciscan resolution. But this delay has given our legal team time to work out an agreement between Purdue Northwest and the city Hammond and, and Franciscan, and I think that it's like a global settlement. So, that's my report. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for the Mayor? Councilman Kluski.
Hi, Councilman.
Evening. The Purdue site, is that the Medical Arts Building across the street from the hospital?
No, sir. It's a, it's the Oncology Center, I believe. It's, if you look at the site, Councilman Mark, it's the northeast corner of the site, okay? And Purdue, previously, before we started negotiating with them, Purdue was getting basically all the frontage on Holman Avenue, which would've left the city the back end, the state line then, and I didn't feel that was fair to the city, how we're gonna market a piece of property with only access is coming off the state line. So we asked Purdue to work with us, and Purdue agreed to go, instead of going north and south, they're gonna go from the east to the west, and they're gonna have their piece of property on the top right quadrant, basically, and the city of Hammond will, and if you keep in mind where we are, the bottom left quadrant is the parking garage, that's gonna be owned by the city, and the rest of it'll be torn down and redeveloped, Councilman Mark. That's where we are right now. I know I've been keeping Councilman Salinas in the loop on this. I know the rest of the council's probably not, so I apologize for not keeping you in the loop on that. But we've worked through those issues. It's taken a while, but I think we're finally through it. Any other questions?
Anybody? Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Council. Nice to see you all.
All right, next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I ask that we approve the minutes from the August 12, 2024 meeting and place them on file.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I move for approval of claims dated August 7, 2024, and ending with claims dated August 21, 2024, claim number 6992 through claim number 7510 inclusive in the amount
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
Approval of claims nine is zero. Next up. Public hearings, we have none. Communications. Any communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, yes. Uh, we all received, uh, all of the council did, uh, notice of a memorial dedication ceremony for the Standard Steel Car Strike that took place, uh, on September 9, 1919. Uh, and, um, standard steel car workers were killed, 62 were injured, and there will be a memorial service on, uh, September 14, 11 a.m., uh, at the Ophelia Steen Center at the corner of Columbia and Highland. Uh, just to give a little bit of history, the, um, four workers that were killed from Hammond, uh, at the time, were not in a position for grave markers, and they were buried in Calumet City. Well, the United Steel Workers Union has stepped up and generously donated, so these four gentlemen from Hammond who were killed on that corner back in 1919 will finally have, uh, um, grave sites. So, uh, please come out and honor their memory.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vines. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Uh, the Capital Improvement Board, uh, met on August 19, uh, this year, and Item A, uh, funding allocation number 203 for the Hess signage and striping project, uh, with Hawk Enterprises in the amount of $21,732.70, and that was in the Second District. Item B, funding allocation number 204, daylight, day lighting utilities for downtown Hammond Station, Dyer Construction Company, in the amount of $8,283.22, and that was in the Second District. Uh, Item C, funding allocation number 205, replace signal controller at trail crossing, Hawk Enterprises, in the amount of $5,716.65, and that was in the Second District. Funding, uh, Item D, funding allocation number 206, uh, replace traffic signal pole at 165th and State Line, that's the southeast corner of State Line and 165th Street, Hawk Enterprises, in the amount of $24,420 even, and that's in the Fourth District, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. President.
Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yep.
It's more of a question for Dean or Bill. I noticed they started the stoplight there by the sportsplex. Is there a rain being added over there? I just noticed they were, they kinda got that one side kinda chopped off there, um, by keys fiber or?
There's a, they're, they're narrowing the west side of the street and widening the east side of the street. There will be a center turn lane that approaches the second.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Edison Community Watch will resume, uh, now that school back, is back in session, and they will meet Wednesday, September 4, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Uh, Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 19, 6 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will, uh, once again resume. Uh, they will meet Friday, September 6, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School, and this is a bilingual program. Uh, Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 12, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College, and, uh, look forward for an announcement for the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, uh, who will have a meeting sometime in October. Uh, once again, I urge everyone to come out to a crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and to learn some safety tips, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Yes. So, somebody wanna bring out 24-15?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, uh, council as a whole will be bringing out 24-15.
Thank you. Okay, now is there any other, more committee reports? All right, committee reports closed. Next up, ordinance, third reading, final passage.
Ordinance 24-15, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance creating a new fund, fund number 4439, to facilitate the 1% municipal food and beverage tax.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 24-15.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, this ordinance simply establishes, uh, a new line item for the controller, uh, fund number 4439, for the, uh, food and beverage tax.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
24-15 passes eight to one.
President Racles, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-16, sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending Title 7 of the Hammond Municipal Code Traffic Schedule 3, and setting a speed low, speed zone limit on Holman Avenue from Sibley to Douglas Street to 20 miles per hour.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Mr. President, I ask that we, um, pass ordinance 24-16, first and second reading, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
This is, uh, complimentary to Jeff Speck's overall downtown Hammond plan, where we are going to be decreasing, um, the speed limit between Sibley and Douglas. Uh, it'll be a five mile per hour deduction from 25 miles per hour to 20.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
24-16 passes on first and second reading, nine zero.
Item B, ordinance 24-17, sponsored by Councilman Racles, and ordinance amending Title 7 of the Hammond Municipal Code for Traffic Schedule 3, and setting a speed limit on Kennedy Avenue from 165th to 169th Street to 20 miles per hour.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for passage on first and second reading.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
This does the same as far as the speed limit goes on Kennedy Avenue that we did on Holman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
24-17 passes on first and second reading. Nine zero.
Item C, ordinance 24-18, sponsored by the, the council member, Councilman Kowinski, and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, upon recommendation of the Hammond Economic Development Commission, designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
I move that 24-18 passed through first and second reading with a public hearing on 9/9/24, and a committee meeting of council as a whole at 5:15 on 9/9/24.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman, Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kluski.
This is the first step in the process of a new construction of a five-story hotel that will be going up in the Marina Development Area. Uh, and for people who know that area, it's basically on the two, just under two acres of where the old car wash stands currently, and there has been a request for a tax abatement, and so this is the first step in the process of considering a tax abatement for that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
24-18 passes nine zero on first and second reading.
President Racles, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 24R-13, sponsored by Councilman Kowinski, a declaratory resolution determining that a certain area of the city of Hammond be designated as a Town Place Suites Economic Revitalization Area, in which deductions from assessed valuation may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
I move for adoption of 24R-13.
Second.
With, I'm sorry, with a public hearing on September 9, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. The second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
This again is another step in the process of the new construction and the asking for a tax abatement, so these are the steps that the council undertakes after, uh, city departments like Economic Development have, uh, done their studies. So, uh, we'll be looking at that public hearing, uh, on the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
24R-13 passes nine zero.
President Racles, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to take this moment to wish our council president, Scott Racles, a happy 85th birthday yesterday.
Happy birthday, Scott.
And, uh, for about two months, he's older than Dave Hamm.
Two months and a week, yeah. Thank you, again. Councilman Warple.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would just like to give my condolences to the Simmons, Fletcher, um, and Williams family in the loss of Edward Simmons III. He was a Hammond High graduate, grew class of 1996. Um, he was funeralized this past Saturday. Uh, we all know Maxine Simmons. Um, she's a native to everything that we do around the city and with the school city, so I just wanna continue to give her our prayers and condolences at this time.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and efficient, business is closed. Next up, public expression. First up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. I had to work in the sun today. There's no shade. Woo! Uh, it's been a while since there was no shade. The new trees on Kennedy need water. They're dropping like flies out there, and it's very frustrating. Someone needs to do something. These are just side notes. Build Back Better, the city of Hammond is actively blocking an estimate on the underpass option at Grand Avenue. All government authorities say Hammond can pursue this option to solve or train issues with funding available. The citizens of Hammond have been stonewalled. Options preferred by the federal, uh, federal experts were rejected for no good reason. The city of Hammond is the only obstacle to estimating the best practical solution. The City of Hammond is the only obstacle to estimating the best practical solution. Mayor McDermott uses the term mayoral malpractice when he, in describing things he doesn't want to do but must. The Fed said this would pay, they would pay for it. In fact, they prefer this option. Why? Because it is the best option with the least destruction that would service the most people. This is the biggest opportunity for the city of city to do something really awesome for our town using 21st century engineering. And you are all letting it pass us by. ABC, accelerated bridge construction is now commonly used in Indiana. The tracks stay in place and the road slides under. Two to four day rail shutdown, not months like the city engineer said. False claims, like the city engineer said. Result, schoolchildren would effortlessly walk safely to and from school. Parents driving kids to three public schools along with teachers and emergency vehicles would have easy access. It would also leave open the fastest route, thereby saving lives for emergency vehicles. This is why it is the obligation of this common council to investigate this option. You need to create a commission to do what is right for our community for the sake of fiscal responsibility alone. We have heard outrageous false claims discouraging us from considering this option. Well, let's put up or shut up. Let's see the real figures and let's let out the pros and cons of both and have an open and frank discussion. Residents deserve to see these figures and designs.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, Jenna.
Good evening, council. I have some exciting news for you all. There is going to be a documentary coming out very soon about the Briar East Woods. Last week, we have posted the official trailer, and I encourage you all to check it out. I have been working on this film since September of last year. I have filmed over 10 interviews with the local community regarding our woods. I've worked with local scientists and environmentalists who want to see our woods remain. I would not trade what I'm doing for anything. There is so much passion in the people I have worked with that I feel honored to be able to give them a platform to speak. This project is so important to me and my community that there is no choice now. It's time for people to see, it's time for people to know what the city is trying to do to destroy nature. And the more people that are aware of what's going on in the city, the less power the city will have through deceit. Not everything has been transparent in our city. This documentary will shine light upon the truth. I want to give a quick thank you to Ken. Ken works nonstop for a cause that will help protect us and our future generations. Without him, this upcoming documentary wouldn't be possible. So thank you, Ken. I appreciate you. It's not too late for our woods to be protected. It is our right as humans to protect our earth, our home. If you would like to be involved in this documentary, I highly encourage you to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.